Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, September eighth. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes for the meeting of August eighteenth.
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor? Nothing under audience. We'll go on to school newsletters for Phelps. Esten Early Childhood Center, Rogers Middle School, and Rockland High School. They're always fun and informative. Ladies, anything to add?
I was just saying, I really liked the middle school one where they were talking about being reflective. And usually you're reflective closer to the end of the year. I like the idea of starting the year reflecting. So it was well-written and very informative, and I think a great way to start the year.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Moving on to monthly reports. For June, we have the administrators, Ms. Shipper, Ms. Holbrook. For guidance, Ms. Black. For the nurse, Ms. Davis. And pupil personnel services with Dr. Miniglia.
Five motions to approve the monthly reports for June.
Five seconds.
All those in favor? And then we have the financial reports for June. We have the Rockland High School student activities and the Rogers Middle School student activities.
Two motions to approve.
Two seconds.
All those in favor?
And before we move on, I just wanted to highlight, these are the reports for all the fundraising that happens and all of that stuff, for all the different activities. So when we say student activities, I just want to say, they look really good. There's a lot of, that's what, when we go to fundraisers, that's where all the money goes to, is the student activities. So we see the ins and outs. So, good, good start of the year.
And then we'll move to the monthly reports for July. We have administrators with Ms. Sheehan.
One motion to approve the monthly reports for July.
One second.
All those in favor? Financial reports for July. We have Rockland High School student activities and the Rogers Middle School student activities.
So two additional, two motions to approve the financial reports for July.
Two seconds.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Monthly reports for August. We have administrators, Ms. Sheehan and Mr. McAllister.
Two motions to approve the monthly reports for August.
Two seconds.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Under new business, we have Rogers Middle School schedule with Principal, Mr. McAllister, who's ready to go.
Thank you guys for, for having me. So yeah, we, we went through a pretty lengthy process of analyzing the current schedule that we had and taking a look at what neighboring districts were doing. So it was an opportunity for us to, kind of, we talk about reflection, an opportunity for us to reflect on what we were doing in the building and trying to identify areas of weakness, areas of concern that maybe we could alleviate with adjustments made to our schedule. So it was a lengthy, lengthy process. There was a lot of research. We had an opportunity to visit other schools, talk with other administrators, see what was working really well for them, areas that maybe they felt that they had concerns that maybe we could make adjustments to here. And so you see in the board is, is kind of the end result, and I know it doesn't seem like it's really exciting, other than it's well-color-coded. But even though the, on the outside, it looks like there are very minor changes, the changes that were made within, I think are going to offer us some large gains, especially when we look at how this can have a ripple effect, not only within our building, but a ripple effect all the way to the high school as well. So we still have a six-day, six-period rotating schedule. That part hasn't changed. And for parents picking up and dropping off, that's not going to change either. So our doors still open at seven fifty-five, our school day still ends at two forty. So parents at home are not really going to feel the effects of this as far as their, their day-to-day routine. So we were trying to be as minimally disruptive as possible. So I think there's a lot of positivity to that. The big change that we ended up doing is creating that, that block in the middle, our fourth period, calling it our long block. So previously in the past, our old schedule, because of the lunch duties and the rotation that we had, we may end up having students in C-block and in D-block oddly enough at the same time. And this was a scheduling nightmare. And so what we ended up doing is kind of synchronizing the entire building on the, on the same schedule. And so the benefit of that, the perk of that, is for our sub-separate teachers or our EL teachers, our English Language Learner staff, who are seeing students in multiple grades, they no longer have that conflict of, I have one student that's in C-block, I have another student in D-block, I'm supposed to be two places at once, which obviously you're unable to do. Or that student that might need to come to them for services, but that teacher is in another period or in another room, obviously that creates a conflict. And also, it can be a safety concern as well, because we have students that are in the building or in spaces potentially without a staff in front of them at that time. So we wanted to alleviate that concern. So by synchronizing the entire building to be on the same schedule offers us an opportunity to better utilize the staff that we have. So for example, our EL teacher can now see the students that they need to see or bring in students from both sixth grade and in seventh grade without any potential conflicts. That long block also gave us some other opportunities as well. So for our seventh and eighth graders, they're going to end up with roughly an eighty-seven-minute period during that block. So they still have their thirty-minute lunch, and now they're going to have an extended period. And what that allows for our science classes, to be able to have longer labs, more in-depth labs, it allows for us to focus on project-based learning within the classroom. It gives our students an opportunity to focus on IXL diagnostics. So when we do our diagnostic testing, it can be done during this long block. So it's going to be minimally disruptive to the, the classroom atmosphere. It also gives us an opportunity in seventh and eighth grade to give them a chance to look at projects over a longer scale, a longer period of time, so more similar to what the high school does. So the students that are transitioning out of upper-middle into the high school are going to have a stronger feel for what is taking place within the high school walls. It does give us an opportunity at five and six to develop recess, which was really exciting for us. So we previously didn't have a recess for five and six, but now we can have students go off for lunch, they can then go out for recess, and then they have an opportunity to come back for a roughly a fifty-two, fifty-five-minute period. And so the opportunity for students at recess is to focus on things like conflict resolution, right? So while they're out there, they are going to have arguments over whether, you know, somebody pushed somebody else when the football was in the air, right? Or, you know, who's playing with what, with what toy at what time? This is a chance for them to, to build those skills that maybe they don't get an opportunity to in the classroom. It was really funny, when we just started recess, I brought the students over to the stadium, had a big conversation with them about the rules and regulations, and here's what it's going to look like. And as soon as I stopped, I had eight kids immediately do a hundred-yard dash across the field, for no other reason than to do a hundred-yard dash. So just all that, that pent-up, you know, angst and, and, you know, that buildup of anxiety, it's a chance for them to get it out of their system. And I think that is, A, incredibly healthy. I, I want them to be able to navigate on their own those social conflicts that are going to take place at recess. That's all really healthy. It's really, really healthy. So we're excited to bring that back. The kids seemed to really like it. The staff, they get a chance to get outside for a few minutes as well. They seemed to really like it, and selfishly, I get an opportunity to oversee it, and I get an opportunity to walk around. It's fun to see what kids are hanging out with other kids, and you get to see them in a different light than what you normally do during the regular day. So I think it's been really exciting overall. I think time will tell. As the year progresses, we'll see what type of impact this is having on disruptions in the classroom. Is this, is this, you know, giving the students an opportunity to get this aggression out of their system and hopefully, an opportunity to be a little bit more focused in the classroom? So that's kind of the, the objective. That's our, our goal. The park department, Justin Bodeo has been absolutely amazing. They were out there lining the fields. A frisbee flew onto the football field. He ran over, picked it up, and played for, you know, ten minutes with the kids, just passing frisbees around. And I had taken a picture of him diving for a catch. He missed. But it was, it was great to see, even, you know, he's a kid at heart. And so an opportunity to get out there and play, and just a disruption from the day, it was a lot of fun. So we're, we're excited to have that back in our schedule. The synchronizing of our schedule also gave us an opportunity to better utilize staff. So previously, as I mentioned, when I may have a teacher who is dedicated to C-block, and then I also need a teacher dedicated to D-block, and they were overlapping, I couldn't use that same person in, in the same classroom. So we actually had to spread our staff pretty thin in order to do so. We're now able to allocate two speds staff dedicated to every grade. The benefit of this is it allows for greater collaboration between our special education teachers as well as our agenda teachers. It's an opportunity for our special education teachers to be able to have a more, a more refined relationship with their students in the classroom. So they, they are seeing them not only in their math classes, but they're seeing them in their science classes and in their ELA classes as well. So they're building those relationships, they're building those reports, and that's going to allow them to better support and assist our students over the course of the year. So we're really excited about that. Sorry, that was just slide one. I have many more to go.
That's okay.
We also reallocated our courses as well. So we had our Unified Hearts courses that, unfortunately, previously under the old system, our UAs may only end up seeing students for as little as eleven days and as much as twenty-two days. So you think about how little you can get through in your curriculum in an eleven-day period. So if you're, let's say, a seventh-grade student, and you're going to your world language class, and on the opposite day, you're going to your health class, that health teacher is only going to see that student for eleven days. It's hard to build a relationship with the students. It's hard to dive into curriculum with those students. It's hard to focus on project-based learning with those students. So we wanted to reallocate what our UAs looked like so we could offer more time on learning, which was our overall objective. We also had students during our bulldog block that were being pulled for band and chorus. And unfortunately, if those students were also receiving services, depending upon the services needed in their grid, they may not get an opportunity to participate in band and chorus. And so that's a great outlet for the student that may not necessarily be into athletics or may not necessarily be a great art student. This is an outlet for them. And they, they didn't get that opportunity. So by reallocating what we were doing with the staff that we had, it gave us a chance to be a little bit more productive with band and chorus. We also wanted to adjust what we were doing with world language. Previously, we had students taking half a year of French and then half a year of Spanish. And again, if it's every other day, it means over the course of the year, you're only seeing those students for twenty-two days. So we were glossing over the curriculum and only giving those students an opportunity to be able to touch on culture. And we wanted to make sure that we were hammering home content with these students, give them an opportunity to focus on things like repetition, because when you're learning a new language, repetition is key. And so we lost that with the old system. So we wanted to make an adjustment there as well. And then we also wanted to take a look at our MCAS data and our IXL data. And our department leads did a great job of kind of breaking down areas that they were incredibly successful, which was most of them, but also areas that we could improve upon. And science had noticed a gap in manufacturing and engineering. So we thought, if we reallocate our UAs, is there an opportunity to fill that gap? Is there an opportunity to replace that need? So what we developed was a STEAM program, science, technology, engineering, art, and manufacturing. And so by developing a STEAM program that was MCAS-driven, it gives us an opportunity to support manufacturing and engineering in the science curriculum. That also means that our students can focus on hands-on learning labs in that STEAM program, which gives our classroom teachers an opportunity to focus more on maybe the labs that they can, they can do within their, their smaller window of time, but also an opportunity for them to drive curriculum without fearing that they're missing anything in the process. We wanted to connect STEAM at the high school with the STEM program at Phelps, and we wanted to build that bridge from Phelps all the way to the high school. So we were kind of that middleman without. Phelps did a great job with their, with their STEM program. The high school has physics, robotics, engineering, and we didn't have any of that, right? So this was a chance for us to kind of fill that gap, build a bridge from what Phelps was doing to the high school as well. And then focusing on those transferable skills. I know I spoke with you guys last year a little bit about innovation career pathways and what that might look like for our students as they, as they transition through high school and into the workforce. This is an opportunity for our students to develop hands-on proficiency in those skills that are transferable to those innovation career pathways, in particular, manufacturing, engineering, and technology. So as our students are going through the high school, they already have a strong foundation to be able to build off of. So it's going to be beneficial for them as well. With world language, we had an opportunity to be able to, again, reallocate what we were doing in world language. We're now offering a year worth of French or a year worth of Spanish, which means it's every other day with a, with a UA. But between seventh grade and eighth grade, they will have received one full year's worth of a language, which means all of our students leaving middle school should theoretically be able to be at a level-two learner when they enter into high school. And that's going to have a ripple effect into what the world language department is doing at the high school as well. So we know our students participate in what we call the syllabi literacy assessment, and there are great scholarship opportunities for those students. When they graduate, they get a cord, they get a pin, they get acknowledgement for that as well. And it means that they're not only proficient in English, but they're proficient in a secondary language as well. If our students are starting high school at level-two, it means they're able to compete and take that assessment by the end of their sophomore year. So if you think about those students that are taking two or more years of a language, with a lot of our students at the high school too, we should have more students be able to apply for that syllabi literacy assessment, successfully be able to take advantages of some of the money that can come from the government, and also give them an opportunity, a feather in their cap, if you will, of being able to graduate with an honorary distinction, which obviously is beneficial as well. And this would also give our students an opportunity to potentially take an advanced placement course their senior year. So by creating a stronger foundation in the middle school, it's going to have a positive ripple effect up to the high school as well. And then with band and chorus. Band and chorus now is going to end up meeting every single day during that bulldog block. Students that sign up for band and chorus are committing to that class the same way that you would commit to an extracurricular at the high school. So they're participating in the concerts, they're participating in band, they're going to participate in the plays. They have an opportunity to fully immerse themselves in the music program that is kind of linked between the middle school and what the high school offers. We have forty-five fifth graders this year in our band. We have thirty-two fifth graders in our chorus, just because of the changes that we made. And there's a direct correlation between students who participate in music and academic success. So again, decisions that are made based on data, the decisions that are made to better support our students, that student that unfortunately maybe is also getting other services during that bulldog block, previously could not have participated in band and chorus. But now maybe they can do three days of band and chorus and have two days' worth of their, of their service. So they're still getting those necessary services to support them academically, but they also give them an opportunity to participate in an elective, immerse themselves back into the community, and again, give them an opportunity to, to branch off. Because not every student is necessarily an artist. Not every student is going to be an athlete. And we wanted to acknowledge that. We wanted to recognize that, and more importantly, we wanted to support it. That's it.
That's all. This is all excellent. I will comment first on the band and chorus. So they don't miss other classes in the meantime of taking band anymore, correct?
No, they're not. And if, if during, so for fifth graders, for example, they still receive advisory, their advisory. So they're going to get their second-step curriculum, and they're also going to have access to the DARE program, which Officer Thoreau runs out of, out of Phelps. So he travels here and goes through the DARE program with our students as well. So they'll still have access to all of that. It also opens up our band and chorus teachers to be able to work with our sub-separate students and be able to have kind of a remedial program for them as well. So an introduction to band and, to band and chorus. We have a student who is in a substantially separate program, who also ends up playing an instrument, and this is an opportunity for that student to participate in that as well. It gives them peer role models to be able to, to work with. It gives them an opportunity, again, to be a part of our larger community, which maybe previously would not have had access to.
Right.
Yeah. So they're not missing any academic classes.
Right.
And if a student is, ends up sick, for whatever reason, misses a significant amount of school, needs to get caught up on their work, they can still, they can still participate in their, in their bulldog block and receive their makeup work as well.
Excellent. Excellent. I think that's awesome. They sort of faded out of band come seventh and eighth grade because they just needed to not miss their academic classes.
Right.
So to be able to, you know, start as a fifth grader and keep it going, it brings it all the way into high school. I know, I'm singing your praises there. I'm, I'm speaking to the choir, yeah. But I think it's wonderful. That's just like one little benefit, you know?
Yeah. And, and I think when, you know, we're, we still have an opportunity to do all of our IXL diagnostic testing, which gives our department leads a chance to reflect on that data along with the MCAS data and make those necessary changes. So our, our students aren't missing out on anything. If anything, it's an opportunity to commit to another elective. So they're almost taking an extra class, if you will. But it's, it's a class where they can develop a passion, they can be part of a community. And I believe that is truly beneficial.
Right. I agree. And I think the recess, and we've been hearing for years that parents feel that fifth and sixth grade is still young and without recess. They just, their bodies are still so busy that it's a hard time to focus all day long. So I'm sure that hundred-yard dash was very necessary. We won't judge you for going. Yeah, I was just going to say. There's no judging whoever's out there, but.
I was about ninety yards behind them. Despite my efforts.
Yeah. I think that is all wonderful. Ladies, do you have anything?
I love the connectivity part of it, how you connected Phelps with the middle.
Right. The whole thing. It's just great. And now I suppose you'd be able to have students that could sort of line up into the high school for schedule-wise too, to take advanced classes or whatnot?
So, not with this schedule necessarily, because the high school runs on a seven-day rotating schedule. And we're only on a six-day rotating schedule. That would be a dream come true, because it creates a lot more flexibility with what we can do in our staff.
Right.
But that would require more staffing to be able, to be able to do that. So we're, we're taking very positive steps forward, and we've been, we've been blessed and very fortunate to be able to expand with what we have within the timeframes that we were able to juggle. So I think we're taking positive steps. I think there's, there's opportunity for growth always. We'll continue to reflect on what we're doing, how successful this is, and if we discover that there are areas for more improvement, we can certainly continue to advocate for that and push forward as, as the years go by.
No, I think this is all huge right out of the gate.
Thank you.
It's wonderful.
Can I just add?
You can. You don't have to raise your hand.
First of all, last year was, was Mr. McAllister's first year as high school principal, and we began meeting on the schedule in August before he started. And this committee had everyone represented, all, all of the major departments represented. And the leadership that Rich and Liam, particularly at the middle school, and, and the flexibility and commitment to the kids first by the middle school staff is extraordinary. The fact that we are in the second full week of school and all-you-know-what isn't breaking loose as a result of these changes, no, I'm saying, is a testament to our commitment to kids first and being adults. And because this is asking a lot of staff, and they have owned it and taken it on the whole nine yards. The parks department, we now have kids running across the stadium, which sounds delightful to us, but if you're in charge of maintaining that stadium, it's not delightful. And they have been incredibly flexible and accommodating and supportive, and so I think it's another great example. Coming back to this high school-middle school alignment, when we first started looking, that was our goal. We looked at seven or eight other districts, intense, and really got under the hood of all these districts. And what we found was, it was not an affordable model for us.
Right.
So, two things. If I'm listening to this, I'm thinking, why didn't this schedule go into effect four years ago? Well, we made changes in this direction. Cheryl Shipper as principal and her staff made, made changes in this direction a few years ago. This is another step. Ultimately, we should be at a high school-middle school on a similar schedule. When we first explored this a decade ago, that was a no-no, because they said you can't put fifth graders, for example, in ninety-minute classes, which I absolutely agree with. But you can put them in, a ninety-minute class is broken into two forty-five-minute classes. So there are many ways to look at this, but I think ultimately, if we could get on a high school-middle school schedule, then you do off, you do open up opportunities for a very talented eighth-grade musician to perform on a regular basis at the high school, or a math student who's in seventh grade, who's ready for algebra, which happens. So that's where we're going, but we found it to be unaffordable. And the fact that we were doing this during very challenging economic times is another testament, again, to Rich's leadership, Liam's leadership, and the quality and, and again, excellent adulting on behalf of the middle school staff for taking this on. I'm, I'm so proud of this group, and, and I'm very hopeful. When you say that you have forty-five in the band in, in fifth grade, multiply that by four.
Right.
So you, you end up with, let's just be round number people, two-hundred in the, in the middle school, which is very realistic. Then you are sending, think of how many you're sending to the high school. Now, for those out in Rocklandland who remember, this used to be a very strong music town.
Yeah.
And very strong music, very strong athletics. Like, let's get back there.
Right. And I think we fell off in that because of schedules. Because parents wanted, they wanted rigor in academics and they couldn't, kids can't juggle.
You know, the, the rise of foreign language. So that's a fifth major we didn't have.
The fact that we are in the second full week of school and all you-know-what isn't breaking loose as a result of these changes, no, I'm saying, is a testament to our commitment to kids first and being adults. And because this is asking a lot of staff, um, and they have owned it and taken it on the whole nine yards, the Parks Department, we now have kids running across the stadium, which sounds delightful to us, but if you're in charge of maintaining that stadium, it's not delightful.
Right.
And they have been incredibly flexible and accommodating and supportive, and so I think it's another great example. Coming back to this high school-middle school alignment, when we first started looking, that was our goal. We looked at seven or eight other districts intense, and really under, got under the hood of all these districts. And what we found was, it was not an affordable model for us.
Right.
So, two things, if I'm listening to this, I'm thinking, why didn't the schedule go into effect four years ago? Well, we made changes in this direction. Cheryl Shipper is principal and her staff made, made changes in this direction a few years ago. This is another step. Ultimately, we should be at a high school-middle school on a similar schedule. When we first explored this a decade ago, that was a no-no. Because they said you can't put fifth graders, for example, in ninety-minute classes, which I absolutely agree with. But you can put them in, a ninety-minute class is broken into two forty-five-minute bro- classes. So there are many ways to look at this, but I think ultimately, if we could get on a high school-middle school schedule, then you do off, you do open up opportunities for a very talented eighth-grade musician to perform on a regular basis at the high school, or a math student who's in seventh grade, who's ready for algebra, which happens.
Right.
So, that's where we're going, but we found it to be unaffordable. Um, and the fact that we were doing this during very challenging economic times is another testament, again, to Rich's leadership, Liam's leadership, and the quality and, and again, excellent adulting on behalf of the middle school staff.
Right.
For taking this on, um, I'm, I'm so proud of this group and, and I'm very hopeful. Uh, when you say that you have forty-five in the band in, in fifth grade, multiply that by four.
Right.
So you, you end up with, let's just be round number people, two-hundred in the, in the middle school, which is very realistic. Then you are sending, think of how many you're sending to the high school. Now, for those out in Rockland land who remember, this used to be a very strong music town.
Yeah.
And very strong music, very strong athletics, like, let's get back there.
Right. And I think we fell off in that because of schedules. Because parents wanted, they wanted rigor in academics and they couldn't, kids can't juggle.
This, you know, the, the rise of foreign language.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a fifth major we didn't have. As growing up, like, taking a foreign language was, yeah, it's a nice thing to do. Now it's mandatory. You can't even apply to a state school without two years consecutive of a, of a foreign language. So, the, the, things have changed and, um, but I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations to Rich and, and Liam and your team, your whole team, Nicole, the whole team, for, for pulling this off. And more importantly, to your staff, um, for owning this and taking this on, because change is hard. And I'm just amazed that our doors aren't broken down and people aren't, you know, freaking out, and that just, I, I'm just very, very, very proud of the team. Great work.
That's a great point. The, the, the staff have done an incredible job of embracing the changes. Uh, I think the staff have done an incredible job of, of, of helping us, helping our team work through the challenges of developing a schedule. And, you know, I, I'd be the first to admit that you look at something a hundred times and you think, I have this thing nailed, this is perfect. And then you need that, that other perspectives come in and say, but that might not work because of this. Or how is that gonna affect me in my particular area?
Right.
And all those conversations, all that adulting that we had, you know, that took place over the course of the year, allowed us the opportunity to mold and shape this schedule so that it can be, it can maximize its efficiency, uh, across the building.
Right.
Uh, so as I said, it's, you know, there's always opportunity to continue growing, there's always opportunity to continue to, to make changes. And we might find at the end of this year, we could've done this a little bit differently and tweaked that, and, and maybe that, maybe that has to happen. Um, but I'm, I'm very appreciative of the middle school staff and how they were able to embrace this, uh, and allow us to move forward. So, we're very fortunate.
I agree. I think that this is, you know, it checks off a lot of boxes that we knew needed to be improved upon, and you've taken that, and we appreciate that. We appreciate the staff as well. So thank you.
If you could go back, can you back one slide for a second? I'm wondering if, could the school committee vote, two slides?
On going to Paris?
To never, to never have moving parts in a slide during a power conference. No, I'm sorry, but it's too much for me, I can't...
I couldn't stand it.
I'm sorry. Just kidding.
The only thing that bothered me is that it just, it disappears. And I couldn't get it to rotate and disappear off the screen, which I thought would've been fun, but...
Oh, I'm such a child, I apologize.
So no, we're not voting to that. Rich needs to step into your office and show you how to do it.
Exactly, that's probably what it is, I'm jealous.
All right, well, thank you. Anyone else? I don't wanna...
I'd love to hear from you again later on in the year.
Yeah, I'd love to be back, I appreciate it, thank you.
Did you?
Uh, I just wanna say, I think last year was really hard economically, and we had to make a lot of changes to the schedule as a result, and we lost the opportunity to give kids a full-year language. And so, this is incredible because it, I feel like it not only sort of overcame those challenges, but also improved what we can, or enhanced what we can offer the students in many other ways. So, just a big thank you to you and Liam and the staff, um, because, like, we're gonna continue to face, uh, challenges and looking at creative ways to still do right by our students and continue to grow is important. So this is fantastic. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate, and the middle school appreciates everyone's support, so thank you.
I just had a question on the recess. Um, similar to in Phelps, there's a certain temperature degrees, kids go outside for recess. Was, you know, I'm assuming we have gym space for when they no longer can be out in the stadium with weather-wise, or maybe it's to the parents of fifth and sixth graders, gotta pack the gloves and not wear the shorts if you're going outside in December.
As part of my back-to-school night, as well as our, our, our open house, uh, that was something that I mentioned, is make sure that everyone's paying attention to the weather. Obviously, if, if it's inclement weather and we can't get outside, uh, we're not gonna put the students in an unsafe, unsafe space. Um, but the, the opportunity for our students to have a chance to get out there, run around, blow off that steam, uh, the longer we can stay outside, I think the better. So, yes, absolutely, parents, please make sure that you have hats and gloves and jackets and, and everything like that, uh, to make sure that we can give our kids an opportunity to get out there and be successful. Uh, we also went out and bought a, a whole bunch of board games and things like that. So even still, they'll have a chance to, to, um, have a little bit more of a relaxed atmosphere indoors, uh, when we do end up with some of those cold winter months.
Very cool.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to fundraisers.
Ready for you to read all fourteen of these.
I know, so I was gonna say, fasten your seatbelts, because there's fourteen of them. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Rockland High School Girl Soccer Snap Raise for Team Gear and Equipment. Rockland High School Golf Program Snap Raise for Rockland High School Golf Program. Rockland High School Golf Program Selling Pretzels to Raise Money for the Rockland High School Golf Program. Rockland Boys Soccer Snap Raise Online to Generate Funds for Gear and Summer League Fees. Um, Rockland High School Student Government Breast Cancer Shirts Proceeds Will Go to Making Strides. Class of twenty-twenty-eight Raffling Yard Lines to Raise Funds for the Class. Class of twenty-twenty-eight Selling Staff T-Shirts to Make Money for the Class. Rockland High School Student Government Homecoming Dance to Benefit Student Government Activities. Rockland High School Student Government Project Pumpkin Trick-or-Treating in the High School to Benefit Student Government Activities. Rockland High School Class of twenty-twenty-seven Cookie Dough and Pies Will Be Done Through, um, MCM Fundraising. They'll be arriving in time for Thanksgiving. Rockland High School Student Government Mister Rockland Talent Show, All Funds Will Benefit the Student Government Account. Rockland High School Student Government, um, Elf on the Shelf Tickets to Be Sold During Lunches Where a Teacher Is Voted to Raise Money for Student Government. Rockland High School Student Government Candygrams Student Can Buy Lollipops to Send to Friends to Benefits the High School Student Government. And Rockland High School Cross Country and Track Teams Third Annual Bulldog Dash 5K Raffle Table. Funding Will Go Towards Indoor Track and Outdoor Track Students and Equipment.
Commentary, I love that people are so far in advance submitting these forms. These go all the way through the end of the school year in twenty-twenty-six. So Project Pumpkin will be ten-twenty-five, the Dog Dash will be six-six. So, um, this is, this is great. I love that everyone's submitting things so early, so. Fourteen motions to approve the fundraisers.
Fourteen seconds.
All those in favor? And that's a vote? Okay, now we'll move on to Dr. Kron's superintendent report.
Thank you, and we'll try to be brief, I have a few things. First of all, um, thank you to the boosters, the athletic boosters and all the parents groups for the work that you do. I think, you know, the fundraisers that are already in line is, is a great thing. But well beyond the money that is raised, it is the involvement that I think is most, um, most beneficial to the students. Having your parents involved, whether they say they like it or not, I think is very beneficial, and I know it's beneficial to the school community. So thank you to the boosters and all the parent groups, uh, that work. We usually only thank them at the end of the year, but I think it's nice to thank them at the beginning of the year. First thing is, uh, just our before and after-school programs that we run. Uh, we'll have, you know, three-hundred students a- after school and before school, and we, we do it as a service, um, to families, so they can get to work, so they can stay at work. And, uh, it's a great program, um, we're very proud of it. Our after-school program used to run both at Estin and at Phelps. We're only running the after-school at Phelps now, so we're bussing the students over. So we think it's an increase to our safety and we know where everyone is. And, um, so I just wanted to raise that, um, point, that we are only doing after-school at Phelps, before and after is at Estin and Phelps. Um, the next thing, just please a reminder to all parents who pick up and drop off at the middle school and the high school. We seal off McKinley Way, uh, so that it's only one way during those hours, so that the buses can come in and so on and so forth. But at this end of McKinley Way, up toward Richdale, it can get kinda hairy. So I'm asking those parents who are used to picking up and dropping off at the end of the day, um, please consider another way to do that. If we get too many cars parked at the administrative lot, for example, it gets in the way of buses coming in and out, we just don't wanna see anything happen there. Um, I, I also, that sort of leads into school safety. Um, we don't talk a lot about school safety because it's something that we spend a lot of time thinking about and working on, but not a lot of time talking about publicly. Um, and we do that for safety purposes. We had our first meeting of our commi- of our committee that has been running now for at least a dozen years with police-fire. Um, we have youth commission, we invite our senior center, everyone who's in our, in our area. Um, and I just wanna reassure the community, as best I can, that we take safety and security incredibly seriously around here, and it's something that we think about all the time. And we have systems in place, um, our students practice probably drills that we wish they didn't have to practice, but we do, um, active shooter drills, we do evacuation drills, we do bus drills, the way we used to do when we were kids. But we didn't have to do active shooter training. But I, I was reminded this morning that I used to climb under a desk in the seventies because we were afraid we were gonna get bombed. So that is the real world we live in, and these drills are, are real. And, but I don't want the community, because they don't hear about it, to think that we don't take se- uh, safety and security very, very seriously, because we do. Um, so any questions about that, feel free to call me, I may not answer all of your questions, but I'll, I'll do my best to explain what we are doing. But I can assure you that it is something that we take very, very seriously. And then my final point, I have a concern, and I think that it's something that we're gonna be talking about as a society, but we're gonna be talking about here in Rockland. The rise of electric bikes is a concern. It's a concern before school, it's a concern after school. These electric bikes, I know, because I've been on them, and I've been told you're too old to be on them, but I, by a kid, actually happened, you're too old to be on that scooter. And I said, I know, but they go thirty miles an hour. So we have students who are coming to school, leaving school on these electric scooters, and it's dangerous, and I'm very concerned that something is going to happen. And there's no, there's no laws about it yet, it's all new. But this year, kids are showing up with these electric bikes, and it's very concerning. It does not give someone who's driving and backing out the chance to reel as slow and careful as you are. Those bikes are zipping around. So, parents, please, if your students have those bikes, sit them down and have a conversation about it. And it is something that we may be talking to you more about formally, uh, developing some policies about. We may have to eventually just keep them off campus during school hours. Um, because they are, they're super fun, believe me, I know, I've been on them, they're, they're super cool. But they're also very dangerous, so we're a little concerned with that. And I just wanted to put that on everyone's radar. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for Dr. Kron?
Where does one store one of these bikes if they bring it to school?
They just tie them up like a regular bike.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're, it's fine in the weather if it rains and so forth? I'm thinking battery powered?
Plastic and, yeah, they're, 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 yeah, they're, I think it's just getting bigger and bigger. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Pedaling is so old-fashioned.
Have you seen them?
Good for you.
We've seen them.
Yeah.
We saw girls drive it down a main road yesterday in Hanover.
Yeah.
On them, yes, in the porn rain, no lie.
No helmets.
No helmets, zipping down. Um, so, uh, we'll move on to public service announcements. We have, um, our new for the season, or for the year, Student Representative Erin Maroney here with us tonight. And, and as, I know, does that sound familiar? Um, for me, as her mom, um, it's a pleasure and an honor to have her here, and I had nothing to do with how she got here. She was voted into that seat, and she'll explain a little bit more, but, um, welcome, and thank you for being here. Um, Erin does have soccer, so she will not be at every single one for the fall, but, um, she's gonna do her best to get here as much as possible. And she is, my daughter says she has a list of things to talk about. So welcome, thanks for coming. You can start yours now. Do, wait, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut you right off. Do you wanna tell them how you actually got here? You are the student, okay, thank you.
So as you just heard, my name's Erin Maroney, and I'm the vice president of the student government. And so one of their duties is to come here and be with all you guys. Um, so I'm just gonna go over some snoo- school news and what's coming up, um, mainly for the high school, but... Um, so the Rockland RHS Girl Soccer, Boys Golf and Boy Soccer are all doing snap raises for families and parents, and whoever wants to donate and support them, um, your money is greatly appreciated and goes towards, um, team equipment and gear and all the fun stuff. RHS Golf is selling pretzels to raise money for the program. RHS Student Government is selling breast cancer t-shirts with the proceeds going to Making Strides. And then, the Class of Twenty-Twenty-Eight will be raffling yard lines to raise money for the class. And the Class of Twenty-Twenty-Seven will be selling cookie dough and pies to arrive in time for Thanksgiving. So just keep your eyes out for those fundraisers. And then coming up events, senior, um, families, Senior Sunrise is tomorrow. Um, seniors should be at the stadium at six AM. Um, Homecoming is October eighteenth, and Project Pumpkin is October twenty-fifth, and Project Pumpkin is for all families.
All right, good job. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, yeah, welcome, absolutely welcome.
All right, we'll go to the left, Melissa?
Um, I think my only public service announcement is welcome back to school, everyone. Hopefully everyone's hitting their stride. I think, uh, some of the little ones started homework this week, so making sure that everyone's paying attention to that. And, uh, good luck with their first full week of back-to-school.
Thank you.
I always do this, I wasn't gonna say anything. Um, just encourage all parents to go to the back-to-school nights, to meet your teachers, to open that, uh, communication, um, and just get to know, uh, the staff that is in your schools. So, that's it. And good luck to sports teams, mu- band, chorus, all, all the areas that are out there.
Thank you.
I have nothing else to add.
Okay.
I just wanted to, um, give kudos to Emily Creeden, a former, uh, third-grade colleague of mine. She started the Family Engagement and Empowerment Course at Phelps. They have their first session tonight, they're nine sessions. They're about five-thirty to six-thirty, and they're going on Monday nights. And it's just a great way to go in and find out what's happening at the school and learn a little something as well. So each time you go, it's something different. I believe she, um, tonight was Class Dojo, how to use Class Dojo and so forth. But we used to do these years and years ago, and there's just a wonderful way to see parents outside of the classroom. And you get conversations going and you build relationships and so forth. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and I encourage the Phelps families to participate. And again, commend Emily for organizing all of this, she's terrific.
Excellent.
Thank you. I had that, that was on my, I thought, saw that and I thought it was wonderful. We talk about being packed moms and packed dads and getting involved, and I think it does make such a difference.
But kudos too, I mean, I didn't know Melissa, but I had both of your children, and you were always involved parents.
Right.
And I think your children have done very well.
But I think that's the key, right? I know for me to get involved, it was my way of getting to know the families that my kids were then gonna be playing sports with and going over after school and having homework partners and things like that. So all of these ways to sort of bring the parents in, it opens up that communication, and it just makes it more of a sort of family town, you know, place. So I think that it's a great thing. Um, for me, I had that, and then I had the Phelps Pack. Um, their first meeting is Tuesday, September ninth, from six to seven. And Estin's Pack, um, their first meeting is Friday, September twelfth at nine AM. And then I had, um, the middle school's first pack meeting is September seventeenth, um, at five-thirty. And then, um, I also saw, has anyone seen the flamingos around town? Yeah, so Phelps Pack is doing the flamingos, if you're interested in being flamingoed or flamengoed.
Flock.
Flocked.
Flock.
Flock your yard.
Okay, if you wanna be flocked or flamingoed, you make the call. You can call, you can have someone else be flocked, or you can have your own yard flocked for your own kids. But if you reach out to the Phelps Elementary Pack, um, they're the ones who are doing it. So I thought that was cool to see. And that's all I have. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? And that's a wrap. Or a flock, thank you.